Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming to our meeting today. This is our second meeting of the month. I call this meeting to order.
Autumn Chapman.
Thank you.
Autumn Dooney here. Wilson.
President.
Autumn DuBois. Autumn Chambers.
Here.
Autumn Chastain.
Here.
Autumn Lynn.
Here.
And we have a corner.
Thank you. Old woman, Autumn, we have the agenda in front of us. There is some adjustments we have to make. We have a copy of the amended agenda. I'm requesting that we add to the consent agenda, item 4.21. I'm requesting that we move the consent agenda, item 4.21 to item 4.22. I'm requesting that we add the consent agenda 4.23. I'm suggesting that we add to the main agenda, item 5.5. Those additions, can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
We'll move.
Second.
It was like, aye.
Aye.
I'd have it. Autumn Cunningham.
Good evening, everyone. We're scheduled tonight to have Pastor Michael Upkins to come and do our devotional. And I got a text from him saying that he had been called out of town. Immediately it came to my mind that I read somewhere it says be in season and out of season, which means to be ready all the time. So I took up on that and I called Reverend Dr. Parker, Pickett, Pickett Parker. And I said, I have an emergency. She said, well, what is that? And I said, well, my person that was scheduled to do our devotion had been called out of town. If it's in a way possible, can you consent and come and do tonight? We are grateful that she has consented to come and do our devotional for us tonight. So I present to you now Reverend Dr. Ann Pickett, Pastor New Generation Christian Fellowship Church.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Guess this is sick time here, but I really enjoy coming each time. And I'm just so excited to see this young basketball team. You know, there is a word that I love. And that word is G-R-I-T. What does that say?
Great.
It which means to me, emotional and mental next city. It's got the power to to keep on keeping on that difficulty. That helps a person endure difficulties. The most that you know is all that. When I first heard this word, it was in my ears, it had a thread in my head. It's a powerful word. Well, it did not feel okay. It didn't always admit. Look at that word up. And I can always cherish that compliment. Grip, I pause and consider its impact. Even the sound of that word sort of boosts my courage. But other day, I had been a hard moment. It was a bright Saturday morning. Enjoying some tempering time. Standing at my bathroom sink. I splash cool water on my face. And then I look, exfoliate a scrub and circle up gross. Enjoy that gritty feel. And I had to think, this stuff is going to make me have smoother skin. After that, I reached for my manicure. I began to fix and polish on my nails. And I, you know, it was chipped and it was uneven. And I thought of the word gritted nail. And the brush, brush. And the brush moves. Purposes. The grit is not only enduring. It also includes the external things that happen, the circumstances, things around you, experiences that provide me smoothing away my rough tree. So my life glows with teeth and carrot. Now I'm going to read a scripture from James, chapter 1, verse 3 through 4. But you know that when your faith is tested, your endurance has a chance to grow. Or when your endurance is fully developed, you will be perfect and complete. Absolutely nothing. So James 1, 3 through 4 speaks of this power of grit. Shape, believe. Grits sound strong, but not lovely. Thank you for the most beautiful word. Ask yourself, how great every word. Oh, Lord God, your name is truly excellent in all the earth. We thank you for making each of us in this room, every person we meet, every citizen of this city and every citizen of the home image. Make the Lord the greatest and infinite work. Thank you for calling. You have given every one of us to be good stewards of your creation, to love our nations and ourselves. We ask your blessing on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work. Give them the grit to make wise decisions that will never fail. Give them grit to do just right and rule in fair. Keep them safe, Lord, from all harm and danger. Thank you for your son, Jesus, who came to save us. Sinner. Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you guys. For the presentation. Yes. At the end of the Thank you very much. Number two, the presentations. We have a presentation of our park and recreation director, Mr. Donald Joseph. We will be recognizing the Special Olympics and the Special Olympians and championship Pee-wee basketball. We also have a firefighter, is a firefighter, new firefighter. No policeman. No, I thought I was told we had a new employee. That was, do we chief? Do we have a new employee we're going? That's it. New employee? Ms. Joseph.
Good evening to everyone.
Evening.
It's my honor to present these two presentations that we have this evening to actually just present people who do what they do. And in our city, City of Moss Point, you know, a lot of times we overdo it. You know, those who have found above and beyond. And so tonight we want to start by recognizing those who were part of the leadership team for our Special Olympics. Now, when I say above and beyond, you know, if you know the Special Olympics, if you know anything about it, it's an undertaking. And so I want to say first of all, thank you to the mayor and the board of aldermen and alderwomen for your support. And we had our city clerk was out there working, HR director, they were out there working. And then we had Ms. Amy St. Paige represent us as our city champion. And so today we want to recognize the leadership team. Those who actually just put in all of the work with their feet on the ground, boots on the ground, hands, feet, everything were involved for that particular day. And so we want to start out by recognizing our leadership team. And so we say,
Need a means. Appreciation of your dedication and support to Special Olympics area 12 track and field games. Hosted by the City of Moss Point, May 11th, 2021. Before I read this one, I was going to, on my way down, I was thinking about this gentleman all the way down here because I really wanted all of you all to know this gentleman because he is something special. We do not have too many Super Bowl champions to come out of Moss Point. But this one did. And he came back home. With all of that experience he gained in football and his education, things he did in Washington DC when he was there, he chose to come back home and give us all of that talent that he brought. This certificate for Mr. Otis. Does he have a real Super Bowl ring? We left about, Pee-wee used to win the Super Bowl. Won the Super Bowl. Otis, thank you so much for coming back home. All that you're doing for us and our city. So appreciate you. Thank you so much. Say something to our young people.
Young man, if I could say anything to you, it would be that follow your dreams. Focus your eyes right now. And think about what you want to do when you get my age, or just being in high school. And your dream, follow your dream. Wherever it takes you right now, follow your dream. By closing my eyes and thinking about what I want to do in life, it brought me back here where I started from. And so I want to pass this on to you. Follow your dream. And those who stand beside you to push you forward, please allow them to. Have a great mind frame to just follow your dreams and do what is supposed to be done. God bless you.
Hannah Johanna. Lassie. I know I messed that up. Hold up, Mike, where are you?
Right here.
Oh, come on.
Down squad.
I want to say thank you to the city of Moss Point for partnering with the Special Olympics and for all of y'all doing, not just the city, but the citizens that came out. I want to thank y'all for that, too.
Well, thank you. Hannah. Gentlemen, I've been here for 100 years. Anytime we call him, he always makes himself available. Peace. Go.
At this time, we would definitely want to recognize a special person. Recognize a special person. And I know that she may say, I don't think I did enough. But life speaks for itself. Every day she is a champion in some way, as a mother, as a friend, as a leader in our community. Every day she exhibits the type of character to where when she shows up, she already makes a difference. So we know that with our weather date change, she was not able to be present that day. But today, Ms. Amy St. Paige, we honor you. And to think of Thank you so much. And I was so sad when the day changed because this was something that was near and dear to my heart. It makes me so proud that this occurred at Moss Point. And thank you, Donna, and all the volunteers. It's, I hope it's an annual thing. Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And now we would like to present to you the senior division for the Senior River Basketball League. This is the back-to-back champions, the Pee-wee Moss Point 76ers. Now I can tell you, being at the championship game, oh my goodness, I thought I was going to have to go to the ER. But they, when they beat the undefeated team, which everybody said that they wouldn't do, then they were already setting the stage to be champions. And so thank you, Mr. Wunsley, for giving them some words of encouragement.
Regal Sadie. Ontay Hunt. Nancy Wally. Brandon Jordan. Marion Thompson. Jason Youngs. Ron Woods. Your House. Larry, Larry Mean. Coach. Thank you.
We want to thank all of our parents and our coach, Coach Means, and also Coach Smith for all of the hard work this season. And we're looking forward to a great season next year. We've got soccer coming up, track coming up, a lot of summer events. And so we're looking for you guys at the next event. Thank you so much, Moss Point, your 2024 basketball champions.
Good job, Coach.
Good job, man.
Somebody on the boss, my two.
Hey, man.
Thank you, God bless you.
God bless you. Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you. You're doing my friend.
I got to definitely shake this guy's hand. How you doing, man? How you doing? Thank you.
We'd like to let you know that there was not here tonight, that we really want our citizens to know how much effort they put in. He was also one of our champions along with Ms. St. Paige, Mr. Bob Boitt Under, has a special child. And he was getting 100% in supporting what we're doing and financially, as well as being the impressive person. So thank Mr. Bob Boitt and it's my local, my one of the unders. Okay, thank you for your patience with that. We're down to our, our, well, let's see, chief. Would you let us know what about our guests here?
He's on the gym.
I just wanted the people to see, tell us a little bit about it. Tell us a little bit about it.
Oh, no, 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 please see, past employees will be our orange officer, part-time orange officer.
Right. Right. But thank you so much, chief. Thank you so much for being a part of, being willing to be a part of Moss Point and what we're doing. And so we All right, thank you, chief.
You'll be good.
Down to the departments. Are there any questions for any department here? We're down to discuss the department of reports.
I had one question, Mayor. On the finance report, usually if there's not one in our packet, we have a hard copy. But I didn't see either one this time. Do we be expecting an updated finance report? Unless I just missed it, I didn't see it in my packet.
No, we're in transition with that, but there will be, you want to address that, Ms. Oliver?
We are in the process, Marion is in the process of trying to meet right now, so have it.
No problem, thank you.
You have another question? No questions. What was? Okay, we'll move down to item three, no public comments. Chris, are you having a public comment, right? All right, we're down to item, well, your consent agenda, item four. Is there any item on the consent agenda that you wish to pull to the main agenda or discuss? A question.
I don't want to put it, ma'am, but I have a, I have a question, is that okay? I have a question.
What item, we'll move it down.
4.7.
4.7? 4.7, we'll move it down to the main agenda.
4.9 and 4.16.
4.7, 4.9.
And 4.16. I just have questions about it.
Yeah, with those adjustments, 4.7, 4.9, 4.16, we'll allow all of them to ask an extra question. We'll pull that up at the time. Unless they're up to get to all the rest. Can I get a motion to accept?
Mayor?
Yes.
I think she said she did not want to remove them from consent.
Yes, ma'am.
Ask a question. You want to leave it on consent?
Well, yeah, we can do that, but normally you move them to the consent, to the main agenda, to the average discussion.
Yeah, that's fine. I just didn't know if you heard. I just didn't know if you heard what she said. She just said she did not want to move it, but she had a question.
All right, go ahead. We'll do that. Okay. Old woman?
Okay, thank you. On this, this 4.7 is the disaster debris removal services. Are we, are we doing that again?
Yes, ma'am. Those, we can extend those other contracts as far as we can extend them. So we need to go back out for bids for monitoring, removal and for consulting. So that's what we do. This is just to advertise to set bids.
And they go start back going to debris removal again?
Something placed before her.
Oh, okay. And 4.9, I wasn't clear on that, ma'am. You are going to be on the, on the Jackson County Utility Authority Advisory Board, is that?
Yeah, there are two positions. Yeah, there are two positions that they are asking each municipality to present to them. And my recommendation is that I would be one of those persons and Mr. Refro will be the other person.
So, so we gonna have two people from Moss Point representing us on that board?
That's what they requested.
I have another question, but that one, does the other cities, the other cities have, okay, thank you. At four point sixteen, that place is already zone commercial at, but for us, the tire, tire place, we've been having trouble with that place with the tires. So, I don't know if that would be a good thing or not. I know the planning commission approved it, but I think we should have some stipulations, because I've had to go over and talk to those people before about the way they were, they were operating over there at that place. So, I don't know what we would do about this, about four point sixteen.
And the reason it came back to you all is because it's, because there was a change in ownership, and anytime you grant a special exception, the new owner has to be granted it as well. So, you're within your right to put restrictions if you want to.
Can you hear those comments, Walker?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mo Chambers, the new owner did say that he intends to clean that place up and, and keep it well kept. So, and the planning commission did add some stipulations. He had to get rid of the storage containers in the back and clean the bushes up. The guy said he intended to do all that, and he's not gonna keep cars on the site either. He will not sell cars.
Okay, thank you.
I guess he answered it. I guess he answered it, Mr. Ketchup, is that we're not gonna have any used car selling on that lot, and as well as, I think, the tires being kept outside or displayed outside or any of that. Just, all of that stuff is kept inside of that warehouse.
Yes, sir, that is correct. That was the stipulation that the planning commission put on him, that he would clean it up and the tires would be out of view. If he did store them in the back, they would be fenced in and out of view.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
And you can make that, the plan and commission just adopt the same stipulations as part of your approval.
But he said the planning commission did make stipulations.
Right, but you all have the final say, so I would just, in the motion, say you adopt the same, the same stipulation.
Thank you.
I make an observation, Mayor. If it's possible, can we get those promises in writing? Because I've had people so-called give their word, and the next thing you know, all of what they said they were not gonna do, they are doing it, and then it takes us seemingly forever.
So, that's why I was saying, put it in the motion, because the board only speaks for two minutes. And what the planning commission did was approved it. They excluded selling used cars and outside storage in C2A Main Street Commercial District due to the special exception. So, to operate a tire shop excluding selling used cars and outside storage.
And we'll make sure in a minute that it's released that, that approval.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
We're the motion now to accept the consent agenda.
Motion to accept.
Hold it a favor. We're down to the main agenda.
Five point one, approve decline the amendment, section B of the Moss Point Care of Property and Professors Ordinance submitted by Alderman Houston Cunningham, sponsored by Alderman Houston Cunningham and Darius Wilson. The draft ordinance was in your packet.
Motion to approve.
Motion to our own second.
Just saying.
Just saying. Any question?
Yes, wasn't it, was some, was some changes made to this?
Yes, ma'am. It was the, it highlighted in yellow. And I know, Mr. Ketchup.
The height of the grass that, because, all right, so if I miss two weeks of mowing, I'm eight inches. So, I'm just trying, look, I don't, I don't want to interfere with nothing that, one and two has. Of course, all of us are trying to struggle to live in this city, and the biggest thing is we deal with eight inches. And I know they're trying to deal with enforcement and cleaning their areas up, and we can't sit stagnant, looking at any of this stuff steadily go up, but two foot and eight inches. That's, look, two foot, I see a problem. Eight inches, I'm wondering whether we could get enforcement.
Ketchup had some concern with the eight inches. I drafted it. I pulled from other cities. But when I sent him the draft, he said, whoa, eight inches is gonna be hard to, because he said the same thing to you. So, if you all want to change what the excess are, that's fine. You can do that.
Well, I mean, we all want to see our city clean, and we all definitely want to see these things go forward. And I know these guys see a lot more than what, you know, and, and believe me, I get the same calls too. But I know when it comes to eight inches, I'm in, I'm in violation. So, I'm just trying to deal with.
See what Mr. Ketchup would recommend.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay.
Alderman Dubos, I agree with you. Eight inches, I think, is, is really too short. I'm the same way. Two weeks, if I don't mow my yard, it's eight inches also. And also, I did have a question on vacant lots. Are we gonna enforce this on vacant lots? Usually in the county, we let those grow back up to natural state, and a lot of people are hard to find that have vacant lots. You know, if they don't live there, they're hard to find, and we're gonna spend a lot of time sending letters and, and, you know, taking people to court over grass issues.
Now, I, if I may, all right, so I do have a lot of vacant lots that we have as nuisances, and that is a problem as well now. But, you know, I'm just saying, because when we talk about plant growth, and then we talk about grass height, there's a whole different, you know, kind of variable in that. But when we talking about just that, I was just kind of concerned about the grass height of now. But overgrowth and plants, and then we start talking about rodents and, you know, infestations, because I just got rid of one property in the area that was just unkempt period, and eventually they got that taken care of. But overall, what we wanted to make sure is that we're just not talking about over compliance and start dealing with something similar to a HOA when we start talking about eight inches in height. Now, two foot, I understand, that's a, that's a major problem. That's gonna also come with plant growth with two foot. And so, we can, we can pretty much put our finger on people who, yeah, this thing has been past two weeks, it's past two years. So, we know how to comply with that, but it was just, that was my major concern, was the eight inch size.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that if I could. I agree, eight inches is pretty restrictive, but I don't think anybody whose grass gets to be eight inches, or everybody whose grass gets to be eight inches, is all of a sudden getting, gonna get a citation. I think that's setting a pretty strict limit. But if your grass is eight inches tall, it needs to be mowed. Now, I understand if you can't get to it this week, you work whatever, it might get to 10 or 12. But at some point, I think this is just, this is a way to keep people on top of it. And, no, I do not think you should, we should run out there and look for every, every lawn that's got eight inches tall, not at all. But, but I think we're sending a message and put some restriction on there that, look, you know, and I, if somebody did get one, and they went out there and took care of it, I think they'd be all right. You know, I don't, I don't think you're looking at a huge find if it got to, just because it got to eight inches. But I would certainly not want to go back to 12, I mean, to 24, which I saw on the first draft. We need to, lots of folks just let the grass grow. We need to get a handle on it.
Are we still on the consent agenda, Haggam, or we on five point one?
And, and Mr. Cunningham, all of Cunningham's purpose is that we didn't have anything, like, they had no enforcement rights at all. So, the ordinance is in front of you, whatever you all think is reasonable is fine. We just wanted to get something in there. So, Mr. Ketchup and his group would have the ability to enforce or something. Not gonna enforce it at inches, and it doesn't need to be eight inches. It needs to be what we're gonna enforce about.
Well, eight inches would be a minimum. By the time you got somebody to complain, and you got a, somebody went out there and looked at it, and you went through the whole process, by the time they actually received a citation, it's gonna be two or three more inches. So, it's gonna be above eight by the time they actually get notified, unless they go mow it. And it's not, it's only gonna happen if somebody complains. I don't think we're gonna be riding around looking for eight inch tall grass with a rumor.
You got eight inch grass tall, you need to mow your dog. I, I agree, but the thing is that we, we get quite a few calls that neighbors actually need to call the police instead of calling Alderman about neighborly things, and that tends to be a call that we get. And that's one of those things that I just wanted to address, because I get calls about somebody's cars, about somebody's grass, about their dogs, about whatever. So, you know, we just didn't want to make it so trivial that every time something comes around, you got a, you got a ruler that's going around in somebody's grass and talking about, you know, when it's unkempt. And so, that's just one of those things that I wanted to address with that.
Mayor, would Alderman Cunningham be interested in compromising at 12 inches?
Yeah, so I, I just, I'm turning with you and Inspector, get together, draw up the drawing, I think it's consistent, it seemed like it's a foot. Is that where we started?
I think it started out two feet, now, and now it's an eight inches. I was just asking you, do you think Alderman Cunningham would, it was his, his, his ordinance, would he want, would he be interested in compromising at 12 instead of eight, instead of going back to two?
I would like to see what the building inspection would be the appropriate length. Marcus?
Well, I, I mean, I'm gonna leave that up to you guys, just to understand that, you know, like Alderman Lennox said, we do have to send a violation that takes a little bit of time. I, I'm just gonna leave that up to you guys. I just, I feel that eight inches is just a little short.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This primarily pertaining to, to overgrown properties, but does, does the county have any stipulation? Any application for grass and in particular, grown, overgrown property?
We do not have a grass ordinance in Jackson County, no, sir.
Okay, so is there an overgrown property ordinance that we could maybe draft from?
Not in the county. We let, we let properties grow back up to natural state.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, they have a distinction. The way this is written, it's all property and yards. So, that would be, if it's a vacant lot, you would be called to them to the same requirement.
Going to them to eight inches on a vacant lot.
So, the way it's written right now, it's all property and yards shall be maintained free from weeds or plant growth and excessive eight inches. So, it would apply the same in the neighborhood as it would a vacant lot. So, this is probably the most extreme, and y'all can make it less extreme if you want to, but this is, this is the most extreme.
Maybe instead of all, we could say residential and business properties instead of all.
And Alderman Chestang, take into consideration, Jackson County has a lot of properties with a lot less density than the city of Moss Point. You're, you're, you're a lot more dense in the city, so I, I agree that maybe you should have a, a grass ordinance. I just feel that eight inches is just really, really low, and I think we'd be spending a lot of time sending people letters for grass when there's many more problems in the city that we could be handling.
I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, the purpose was to at least get an ordinance with something in it which we didn't have at all. So, when we have overgrown properties, we address them to have them cleaned up, then they didn't have anything stipulating how high the grass could be for they, for them to address it. And so, this was to get something on paper to give them some power, authority, to be able to address overgrown properties. I would say, just out of my own, this thing is eight inches. From the bottom here to the top of here is eight inches. Again, I have no problem with that. If you're gonna let your yard grow, eight inches or better. But the thing that we are trying to do is, if we're gonna clean up our city, and they're going to assist us in doing that, we have to have something in writing by which they can follow to be able to address those problems.
And I thank y'all, because I'm having the same problem with the neighbor next door to my restaurant. It takes somebody, it takes somebody to knock them on their door all the time to comply. And I agree with that, because it creates a nuisance. And me trying to run a business, it creates a nuisance. So, I definitely understand it, and I'm not in any ways. But then, when you look at that property, you see the plant growth along with the two foot. So, I, I got that part. Then, now, two foot could be just some plush grass that you just sink down in. So, that's a little bit different, and that's the only thing that, that gave me concern. So, that was just it. But I, I definitely wanted to see this improvement happen, and I do understand about the enforcement side. So, we definitely want to see this thing, because it shouldn't take somebody to have to always tap you on the shoulder to say that you're not in compliance. And so, I agree. I definitely want to be on your side.
I have no problem adjusting the eight inches. My main concern is, is to give them something by which they can work for what needs to be done. And I would say, if we're gonna clean it up.
But do we need to put it on hold so we can all discuss it and come up with a number with Marcus?
Do you want me, I'll, I'll do a survey of all the other cities, and then I'll have a recommendation to Mr. Cunningham that we can represent at the next board meeting, and just to make sure we're not being too far out there. And again, he, he asked me to get this together, just so they would have something to enforce, but we want to be fair. But I'll, I'll have something to him before we meet again.
If, if, Mayor, since we own this, we're only addressing the grass, now do we also have a problem with the vehicles? If so, then we need to make that known as well. If we got a problem with the vehicles, then we're asking them also to start cleaning up in these yards and on these properties and things as well.
And that's item D, or number D, if y'all got it, it's inoperative, inoperative motor vehicles, yeah. So, y'all look at D and see if y'all want any adjustments to that as well. Just take it. Get any comments anybody has it to me before the next meeting, and I'll do, fill in code and check what all the cities in Mississippi have compared to grass height, and then I'll have it back to you before the next meeting.
Motion to table it then till full discussion. Second.
Hold it a favor. I just have it, we'll table the slide until next meeting. Five point two.
And five point two, approve decline request to amend the resolution effective date of the waste code increase to March the 20th, 2024 submitted by Mayor's Billy Knight Senior.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve, Cunningham, second, Alderman Chapman, any questions? Hold it a favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just have it.
Five point three, approve decline authorization to execute an addendum to the contract with Rainey Cosley and Associates submitted by Tom Hewitt, Grant's and Project Manager.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve, Wilson, second, Alderman Chapman.
Alderman Cunningham.
Alderman Cunningham. Any question? Hold it a favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just have it.
Five point four, approve decline request to hire Herbert M. Chapman as part-time warrants officer submitted by Rainey Ashley, Chief of Police.
Motion to approve. Second.
With motion, Alderman, second, Alderman Chestang. Any question? Any discussion? Hold it a favor, say aye.
Aye.
I know five point five from the amendments, I hand out that you had approved decline a request to hire Tom Story as a consultant to complete.
Um, item 5.5 from the amendments, I hand out that you had approved decline a request to hire Tom Story as a consultant to complete the year 2021 audit report at a cost of $9,000 and to amend the budget accordingly submitted by Mayor Knight Senior.
Let me give you the background on this. Before we vote, you know, uh, financial, something that we had on the contract, this Marion governor, uh, started a new job on Friday. We have no one here now that is working at the auditor and getting our audit. Getting information that the auditor need to complete the 2021 audit. This person will be the one that we were hired to approve to focus on nothing but getting information that the auditor need finish up this audit. This is a serious issue, this audit, as you know, this has been going on now for six, four years, it's been backed up. But this audit now, 2021, is now entering us of completing the agreement on the water meter project. Water meter project that we thought we had in place. They are now saying we got to wait on the audit. We can't get the audit completed because the auditor have not got all the information in here. This person will come to make, to come be hired to make that happen. That's the seriousness of it. When Ms. Governor was here, she was working on that. She isn't longer here. That's the purpose of needing Mr. Tom Story. He's a CPA. He worked for the state office. He's come highly recommended. I recommended to fire this gentleman for he said no more than eight months, he should be able to have this done. Eight months to you. Motion to approve. Hold it a favor. 5.6, is that where we are?
Uh, yes, sir. No executive session.
No, it's second.
Into a journal.
Hold it a favor, say aye. I just have it. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.